We opened the meeting then and had the roll call, but if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Judy Greer, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we...
I'll sing too.
Sure. You may sit if you'd like. Go ahead. As we work to finding solution to many of our challenges, I would like to share the words of one of our past Presidents Dwight D Eisenhower. People talk of the middle of the road as though it were unacceptable. Actually, all human problems, accepting morals, come into the gray areas. Things are not all black and white. There have to be compromises. The middle of the road is all of the usable surface. The extreme right and left are in the gutters. Thank you, Mr. Eisenhower. Okay. Any announcements?
I have one, Mayor. Next Tuesday, August 26th, we will be having a water study here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM.
Written communications? We have no presentations. Oral communications, and this is where members of the public may address the city. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting, and speakers will be limited to three minutes. Anybody from the audience have anything they would like to say? Okay. Consent calendar?
We have nine items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is actions, to approve the actions from the August 5th, 2014 city council meeting. We have two sets of expenditures in front of you. The first set is warrants in the amount of $154,356.97. The second set of warrants or expenditures are warrants in the amount of $320,804.4 and electric fund transfer in the amount of $54,447.67 and payroll in the amount of $226,087 for a total expenditure amount of $601,214.71. Item four on consent calendar is the authorization for staff to purchase safety handrail equipment for South Beach for not to exceed amount of $7,500. The fifth item is the continuance of the interim chief financial officer agreement, and we're asking for authorization to extend that agreement with Chris Woidzik to continue his temporary capacity as the interim finance officer, and that is for duration not to exceed six months. The sixth item is the purchase of a thickener pump for the Pebble Beach wastewater treatment facility, and we're asking for authorization to purchase that pump not to exceed the amount of $18,736.87. Item seven is the professional services agreement with On the Wing Falconry. And we're asking for you to authorize for the city manager to enter into a 10-month agreement, and that is for the city's share of the $2,200 a month. The other third would be the chamber and the third third. We are still working to finalize the private businesses and property owners, so we do not have a complete list of that compiled yet. Item eight is the resolution authorizing destruction of certain documents, and those are finance and harbor related. Item nine is to ratify prior action to purchase heating and air conditioning units in City Hall.
The pleasure of the council.
Except for in the council chambers.
I want to first just point out I have several abstentions on items two and three, but I would like to pull item seven and item nine I need to abstain from, so I'd like to pull that.
What are you doing? You're just pulling seven?
I'm just pulling seven and nine. Please.
Has anybody seen the documents that are to be destroyed?
I'd like to pull eight, myself.
Okay. Eight?
Any others?
I just kind of wanted to ask Dave about the mechanical pump that we're going to need for the sewer treatment plant. That's...
Let's just pull it.
Yeah, let's just pull it. That's number six.
Yeah.
That's all. Just so people can know what we're purchasing.
Public have any comments? Okey-dokey. Can we have a motion on the other items?
Move items one, four, and five.
Second?
You want to comment on one of these items that we're pulling?
Are you commenting on the...
What are you commenting on?
Thickener pump.
Oh, we're not quite there yet, West. Thank you. Okay. So we're voting on items?
One, four, and five.
One, four, and five.
Actually, no. One, two, three, four, five. But Councilmember Cassidy has some financial interest, so she's recusing from the approval of the warrants for the portion related to those businesses.
I'll revise my motion to add two and three.
Okay. One, two.
I'll revise my second.
Let's call for the vote.
All ayes.
Now we are at item number six. The thickener pump?
West, you want to come up and explain it?
This is West.
Yes, West, Korean Environment Strategies. You had some questions on the thickener pump.
Yeah, I was wondering what that's going to be for and what you guys use it for, and how often are we going to be, will we need to replace this particular unit, and that's about it.
That pump's been in there for years. It's a standard part of the process. It's used daily. It pulls the thicker material out of the gravity thickener and distributes into the various parts of the plant. So it's used constantly. It's probably got a lifespan of five to 10 years.
Okay. Excellent. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Public comment? We have a motion on item six?
So move.
Second?
Second, yes.
Been moved in second?
Yes.
Call for the vote? All ayes? Item number seven.
First, I guess I am not sure whether or not I would need to abstain from this because I don't know the list of other participants. So that would be the first question. And my second question is definitely for Jen, and that is, I'm concerned as to why this didn't go out for bid, and if it did, if you could just tell me that it did and when that happened.
Sure. Our original plan was to put this out for bid. That was prior to the one-month agreement that you council approved at the last meeting. Unfortunately, looking at the timeframe, as you know, with this city bid process and advertising for a few weeks at least, reviewing the bids, that we felt like we would miss this whole summer season, and we wouldn't be awarding a bid until potentially late September, early October if we proceeded in that manner. So the intention, I know, of staff and management that following this, we would, within a few months prior to its expiration, we would go out to bid if we were to pursue a Falcon contract in the future. So this was the only one that we would not be bidding, putting out to public bid.
And then who are the other participants, or are you at liberty to say that yet?
The only reason why you don't have a list is because it's not 100% firmed up. So I guess the approval tonight would be, if council approved it, would be for the city's portion that we would be committing to it, which is the 2,200 a month, which is what the last contract was as well. The chamber, of course, has agreed to pay that same amount, and then several stakeholders in town have agreed already to sign a contract with their business or their property owner being on the contract for it. But we don't have a finalized list, which is what we had hoped to bring you tonight, that we don't have. So we'd be happy to give that to you as soon as we have it, potentially by the end of the week. We know it will be, the contract will be executed and ready to go in time prior to the expiration of the contract that we're in right now, so September 2nd. But we don't have a list, a firm list of those businesses tonight for you.
If you have some names, can you, do you have some names?
Sure.
Can you share those with Councilmember Cassidy so she can determine whether she has a conflict of interest?
But I'm only voting on the city's portion.
Well, no, because it's a contract with...
It's a contract that would involve the other...
It's going to be a contract involving all the entities. All the entities would be signing on this.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make it so difficult.
That's okay. Sure. I don't want to speak out of turn because we haven't secured what dollar amount these different businesses would be, but Roy Rose is committing to, on behalf of his property on Crescent, the Blue Water Avalon, the various businesses in the metropole marketplace and the metropole marketplace themselves, Sana Hernandez, and then they're working with, putting the proposal towards other business members, names that they have proposed that we have not heard, I have not heard one way or another, so maybe definitely speaking out of turn, would be approaching Caleb Linds for his various businesses, the Yacht Club. I know that they've already been approached and are very interested, and yeah.
Okay. No, I'm good. I just want to make it known to city staff that we've been working on this project for quite a few months now, whether we were going to have it, weren't going to have it, and I know that you've come in and sort of taken this on and ran with it, which I appreciate you doing, but there's no reason why the city couldn't have gone out and looked at other purveyors of this. And I just want to say that before I would agree to continue any contract past this, I want to see it looked at further in whether this is the right person, the right business, the right solution for us.
Scott, could we proceed forward with maybe a two-month extension on this agreement, or however long we think that a bid process would take us, two to three months, just to get us, so we have coverage?
And whether the rest of the council feels that's necessary, I'm not sure. This could just be a solitary issue, but I just know that we've been looking at this for months and months, and there was a period of two or three months where we didn't have any falconry service. And I know that there's been options of looking at other services or whether this is the right solution. I just want to make sure that we do due diligence before just extending. So if it's the pleasure of the council, I'm happy to agree to this, but I think we need to go out and look at all of our options.
Then that emotion would be, the motion to approve and authorize staff to finish negotiating a contract with On the Wing, Chamber, and the other vendors with a condition that no further extension of this contract will be done, and it must be put out to bid for services after the expiration of the 10-month extension.
Don't you want to put it out to bid prior to the expiration?
Well, yes. Right. Exactly.
So then we'd be terminating the contract potentially if we were to find another bid?
No, it'll be a 10-month contract, but we would start the bid process probably in three or four months to make sure we have...
The contractor ready.
The contractor ready, mobilized, and familiar with the city to take over.
By June.
Because they're probably going to have to make certain they have adequate, if it's not this contractor, they would have to make certain they have the birds trained and ready to go for Avalon. Because you wouldn't want to, you want a seamless transition.
Is that kind of what you were saying?
Yeah, that's, I'm happy with that.
Well, before...
That motion, but I'd like to hear if anybody else had any concerns on this.
Couple of different concerns. And that's good, the things that you're mentioning is all real good, because I thought at one point we were going to go out to bid by end or stand. I guess part of the issue that I have is quantifying the work performance. And it seems as though the contract should have, we should be able to come up with some kind of quantification, whether it be, and I'm going to talk about the Blue Water Avalon because they said at one point they were comping about $4,300 in meals in a month, and I don't know how many months that was, and I don't know how that's going now. Then you hear that the birds migrate, there's a migration period where they go to Mono Lake and they nest and they have their babies. Well, is it necessary to have a contract? And because it's, because it also appears that a big part of the problem now is the pelican, I mean not the pelicans, the seagulls, because they're the most aggressive. And if they leave for three or four months and have their babies, and because there was a time where there wasn't a lot of bird action, I noticed it anyway, I mean, it'd be interesting to know those kinds of things. I mean, as a contractor, I feel bad. I mean, it's like, oh, we break service, but I'm wondering if we do break service, if it's not necessary. That's one. And then number two is the whole contract with the way that you're writing that, making that recommendation or that motion, don't we have to go back and ask those vendors, the other participants, that first? Are they willing to, do they want to, you know, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if any of those other folks are here in the audience that are going to be signing on the dotted line, so...
We were talking about a 10-month contract from the get-go.
Right.
Right.
So it's, I don't think it changes the contact or the context of the contract because it wasn't going to be a 10-month contract that they were signing on for.
But in all fairness, I've seen many, many different options that have come through Chamber and then through the city, and the numbers have changed drastically, and also the requests, the requirements and whatnot have changed over time. And so that was part of my concern, is to make sure that this is the right price, this is the right person, this is the right activity, this is the right number of days. And we've had extensive conversations about, there's several months in the early, late winter, early spring where if the squid's here, there's nothing you can do about the birds. It's just going to happen. And so I just want to make sure that we're very thoughtful in the decision that we make.
Mayor, was my understanding that you just brought to, brought to our attention that you were questioning basically the effectiveness of the program? Is that...
Qualitative data, but again, I need, because you brought something up that you just clicked in my memory again, as well as Ben stating that as part of our cease and desist, it's, they like to see that, and it's very important that it be a part of our process. And so, thank you.
Yeah, our diligence towards keeping a program going and our thoughtfulness towards cleaning up our bay is really important. Yeah, the board, the California Board, Water Quality Board wants to see us moving forward with this, with our efforts. That's big for me, and I know a lot of, I've gotten a lot of support for this program. I'm kind of concerned that Rocky's not here right now. I'm not sure why. I wish he would have been here so we could ask him some questions if we need, if need be. But I'm okay with the program because it's really hard for somebody to move in here, bring their birds in, and get comfortable, not just with the lay of the land, but the birds need to become acclimated with what we're doing here. And I've just, I've heard a lot of support for the program. But I respect Councilman Cassidy's inquisitiveness, and absolutely.
Well, and then can I ask one more question before we call for the motion? In the past, he said kind of on his own time, he was cleaning out the bottom of the pier, underneath the pier from the netting and whatever. When I was down there when there was the monsoon, it looked like it was pretty cleared out. But is that something, do you think he'll continue to do?
He's working with our public works director, Dennis Jayich. Since Dennis has been here the last several months, his crew has really worked diligently to reline the underside of the pier with really effective netting that we feel is going to help the efforts of the falconer to reduce the nesting under the pier. And they're working hand in hand. And the other thing that I should, Rocky currently does send us a weekly update at the end of his days here, and I'll make sure that that gets forwarded on to the council so that you have the knowledge of what exactly happened this week, that you can have, I mean, it's not necessarily as quantifiable as knowing we're increasing or reducing our local businesses' burden by this much or that kind of thing, but it would certainly help for you to know this many pigeons were captured or this, you know, what the effect of that particular week was, so...
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Move.
So are we going... Motion in a second.
Scott, you want to summarize that motion again?
Yeah. The motion is that the council authorize staff to complete negotiation of the agreement for a 10-month period with On the Wing Falconry, the Chamber of Commerce, and the business owners, subject to the condition that after 10 months, this contract is terminated, and that during the length, time of this contract, that the city will go through an RFP process for falconry services and bird pest removal that may or may not result in a new contractor or the same contractor, depending on what that evaluation process is.
Okay. It was moved and seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. I know. Does the public have any comments? No? None being called for the vote?
Four ayes, Marshall, Cassidy, Hernandez, and Olson, and one no, Councilmember Sampson.
Okay. Item eight.
Item number eight.
About the destruction of documents. Someone had a question?
Yeah. I had, I wanted to pull this one, Jordan. A few years back, I think we purchased a scanner back in the day. Is that still operational? Do we still have that scanner? I know we're going to get it for planning.
Yes.
At one time, is that still, we still have that available? I would sure like, instead of destroying any kind of documents, I think we should scan them and then go ahead and get rid of whatever you need. It always seems that always something comes back to bite us. I know these, some of these things here are going way back, but it seems to me that we had an incident with Catherine Hotel about a receipt or this and that being missing and documents not there. But I think if we have the opportunity with a scanner to scan all these, get it done and then get rid of that document, keep on hand for our own use. And I think that was one of the reasons we purchased that scanner, was for that. And that was my question. I mean, is there a problem with doing that, or is that feasible or not?
No idea.
What did you say, Jordan?
I have no idea.
Richard, I'd just like to address some of these items, like utility bills, those things, I don't think we'd need to scan because they're so old. You have a great idea, definitely, especially planning documents, which is one of the great reasons why we purchased that. Chris, did you want to say something?
Chris Woidzik, interim finance record. I can say that we have gone through all of the boxes, and there are a lot of boxes to scan them. It would take a significant amount of time, but I can say that we did, there've been two efforts to go through the boxes and review the contents, and we felt that the materials in there were not something that we would need for a future purpose. I can say further that the, you can see that from the list, a bunch of these are dated material. We have already been, they represent, yes, revenues and expenses, but we've already been reported on them, we've already included them in our financial statements, and they've been audited and opined on by our auditors over the years. So we've already, so a need, one of the needs you could say for that, keeping that material, has already been, has already been met. And I guess if I was saying, lastly, for example, for the Internal Revenue Service for our own personal tax returns, I think IRS guidelines say up to seven years, but that's only for the return itself. All the supporting information, you don't really need to retain that in cases. So I guess I just want to circle back. We've already looked at this material, it's already been subject to audit, and we've closed out those fiscal years, so I just want to add that to the discussion.
If I could add one other thing, the list of documents proposed to be destroyed is consistent with the state law guidelines, and also, one of the steps that has to go through is, the city attorney's office has to review this list, and this list was actually longer. And so there were some documents that I felt that we shouldn't be destroying, and so we actually, we're going to be keeping those. And so these are documents that, again, under state law and our offices review and looking at the state policies, we thought could be destroyed. There are certain documents you cannot destroy, and state law forbids you to destroy these. Those documents, none of these are on that list. And we did call down the number. With respect to scanning, I guess we could theoretically scan them. The issue is, if part of the reason to destroy these records is to reduce cost because we have storage costs, there's a cost in scanning them. We'd have to, we'd have, the city time would be, some force, the employee would be...
To store them on a disk would be costly.
Can't you store them on a disk? How big, how much, how many documents are you talking about? 10 boxes?
The list is 100, the list is 100 boxes.
100 boxes?
That's correct.
Hire someone.
Seems like there's some...
Well, are there any of these that stand out that really concern you? Because like, more in cash receipts, I don't know why those would be of any interest to keep.
My concern was when we had that incident with the Catherine Hotel. It seemed to be a big deal at the time, and it was a small receipt, and then we got, came back to bite us. That was my concern.
There was some insurance.
And I do agree with you about the cost and the time effort of scanning things. I do agree with that. And yeah, there probably is some things that we probably could go ahead and do on that, but that was just my concern, and that was the reason I brought it up.
Well, there are, there are professional services that do not only house your documents, provide digitization of your documents and organization of them. Those are, of course, another expense that you'd have to look into if that was a priority determined. The company that we're looking to destroy the documents themselves, that's one of the things that they do, but they also destroy documents. They have retention policies and let you know about it, but that would be a whole nother ballgame to get into if we were to look into that. I mean, we're already talking to them, we can get pricing and see what it would take and how logistically it would work for us to be able to manage that. But managing the documents here on our side, yeah, I think that would be incredibly, incredibly time-consuming for staff just to go through it. I mean, it'd be almost a full-time job to go through all that sort of stuff.
You get a high school kid that likes eight hours a day. Or some community service people that we maybe, yeah.
There you go.
Not with all of us.
Come on, Gina's right behind you there, Jordan.
Just to remind you, we do have a thought process going forward for this next year on records retention. Right now, we are where we have, if you want to look at the 80/20 rule, 80% backlog going back many years, storage in the warehouse, storage issues overall. But what our plan is for this next year, and we mentioned it in our IT strategic processes, is to look at what we accumulate now and going forward, how to handle the paper that we create today. So you're absolutely correct, we're looking at scanning, but there are all sorts of protocols associated with how you scan documents. So ultimately, we like to have a good rule environment for staff and you to look into these documents, maybe not receipts, probably not going to get to that point, but there's definitely a process that other cities do have set up for that, for retaining documents that are important. So you're definitely on the same path, but in terms of these documents, as Chris has mentioned, these are, these can be destroyed at this point. They're basic receipts. So, but we are going to be looking at that and being a little bit more organized on it. So that... So that's the IT perspective on it.
Thank you, Gina.
Sure. I think I just would have only questioned what four items were. The rest of this stuff, I'm pretty familiar with what it is and it's not is critical. But I would have, the four that I would have just asked about, which I'm not necessarily sure we need to discuss those in detail in a public forum, but the workers' comp, the desk files, green cards, I wasn't sure what that was, and then the Vic Perez info. So those four items, I just, I couldn't figure out what they were, and so I was, would have been concerned about that. But other than that, I'm very comfortable with all the other items on the list. Anything planning-related, I would probably ask to hold, which I'm sure we wouldn't. But this is, this is all pretty basic for me.
Amanda?
I just wanted to clarify what the planning request was about. In the process of going through construction plan checks for a project, sometimes we get multiple generations of plans. They submit one set, we send it off to Eschill. Eschill gives us a list, gives them a list of corrections, and they submit a whole new set of plans. And so we end up with plans that are the past, the draft version. And what, the problem that causes for us is then you have the final approved set, and then you have these unapproved sets laying around muddying the water. So it's those unapproved draft sets that we're asking permission to go ahead and destroy.
You don't have anything on this list.
You said planning documents.
No, I would've said if we would've had planning. I would've really questioned that.
My apologies.
Now you know for the future.
No, we know. Thank you for that, though.
Thank you for the update.
Okay, well, what's the pleasure?
I like Cindy's idea that maybe we should keep some of these documents and look through them, at least since nobody on this council has even looked through any of these. And then, you know, maybe we could scrap the rest of these.
But, Joan, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Some of that information, we are not allowed to look at, such as specific workman's comp claims and things like that. I guess I was pointing that out to say, I would just question that saying, are we absolutely sure that there's no information in those four boxes that we would need or could ever come back? That's what I was saying.
Those are separate from the personnel files. Personnel file actions are things that we have to keep, period.
What's green cards?
I don't know.
Documented by- Commuter subsidy cards.
Oh, Vic Perez info? Just handle it. Vic Perez info? What's the Vic Perez info?
What is that? Who is Vic Perez?
Settlement or something.
66, line item 66.
I think that was the employee and part of the workers' comp stuff.
Desk files, city manager, and attorney?
Those were just personal documents that were cleaned out from past city attorneys and city managers. So they had just notes or other documents from their desks that we don't want to just generally discard, but aren't of any significance, but just from their office.
Those sound interesting to me.
Do you want to approve except for those four line items?
No, I'm okay with those line items. I mean, just a basic, that's what I said. I wasn't gonna pull the agenda item, but since we were talking about it, those were the four that I would've questioned. I would make a motion to approve, as is.
Second.
Public comment? Further discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Three ayes, Marshall, Cassidy, Olson, two noes, Sampson, and Hernandez.
I'm gonna abstain from nine.
Yes, because it was pulled.
And-
Because it was pulled.
Someone pulled item nine?
No, it wasn't.
Is it air conditioning?
Yes.
You abstain.
She can't come back until we get it in here.
So we talked about it for a long time, she won't come back.
So who pulled item number nine?
Cindy did to abstain from it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, she doesn't have to leave, I'm sorry. I thought there was discussion on this item.
Okay.
You don't have to leave.
Is there a motion?
I make, I make a motion to accept this. I like it.
Second?
Fine with me. We gotta keep our staff comfortable.
Are we getting it in here?
We're a low man on the totem pole.
Still moving forward with that, Richard.
Okay.
That will come back to you, definitely, with the cost.
And is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, public comment on air conditioners? No further comment? Call for the vote? Thank you.
Four ayes, one abstention, Councilmember Cassidy.
General business.
Hang on.
She's getting caught up.
Ann Dudley, how well can you hear Chris? He's got a nice little voice.
All right.
Can you hear Chris?
Yes.
Okay, he's just way too tall. So is she.
Directors.
Okay. Beautifully tall.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, Chris Voitzek, interim finance director. We are pleased to present to the council this evening the fiscal year 2013 financial statements. We've now concluded the audit, and we're presenting those financial statements to you, as well as a couple of other reports. The SAS 114 letter, 115 letter, and then an agreed-upon procedures report, having, speaking to annual appropriations. I'm also pleased to present Jennifer Farr. She is the partner in charge of our audit with Mayor Hoffman McCann, and she has a presentation here that she would like to present to you. And I would say that this is the Mayor Hoffman McCann's second audit of the city. They audited 2012 financial statements, and they audited 2013, and they're set to, we're going to get set to have them audit the 2014 financial statements as well. And so I'll let her do her presentation, and then we can answer any questions you may have afterward. One thing, though, do you all have a copy of the bound financial statements? If not, I will provide to you.
I forgot to bring mine this evening.
I will.
Do we need him for this discussion? We've been through him and we've met.
Yeah, we got him.
Okay, so then I think we're good in that regard. And without further ado, Jennifer Farr.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm a little shorter, so it's a little easier. Good evening, and thanks for having me here today. I have a short presentation for you to go over the results of the annual audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. We performed this audit primarily in June and finished it up in the July timeframe. And I wanted to applaud you and the finance department for getting a little caught up this year. If you recall, I was at the city council meeting, I think just a few months ago, presenting the June 30, 2012 financials. So in a very short period of time, we were able, the city staff was able to close the books, have us come in, perform the audit, and finalize the audit in a very short timeframe. So I think that's something you should be very proud of. For June 30, 2014, the goal would be to have the books closed and have us do that audit before the end of the fiscal year, or before the end of the calendar year 2014. If you do that, you really are very much on track with every other California city. Most cities in California, their goal is December 31 after the June 30 fiscal year. So I think that would be something to be very proud of, of the work that you've done once we get there. So we're catching up, and hopefully by the end of this year, you will be completely caught up on your financial reporting. So just to point out some financial statement highlights, we issued an unmodified audit opinion, and we dated that August 8, 2014. That's a clean audit opinion, or the best audit opinion that you can receive for financial reporting. Overall, for June 30 of 2013, if you combine all of the funds and all of the activities of the city, there was a loss of $616,000. There are three different types of funds reported in your financial statements. One of them are the governmental funds, which includes your general funds and your grant funds and capital projects funds. Combine those, had a small gain of $155,000. The enterprise funds, which are the harbor, sewer, and other business-type activities, reported a loss of $222,000. But that's largely due to losses in the sewer fund. The harbor fund actually had a pretty significant gain. And then the internal service funds, those are the different services that support city operations, had a loss of $215,000. And that is because the expenses in the vehicle maintenance fund exceeded the charges to the other funds of the city. So as you're, as you're doing your budgeting, you normally want your internal service funds to break even, and so you are recovering the cost from all of the other funds as you're incurring those expenses. And I did want to point out footnote 10 is always a good read. If you haven't read that yet, there's about two pages of information on outstanding pollution issues and litigation issues, and we try to update that note each year as there's more developments on those issues. Looking at revenues for the last two years, you can see that they are extremely flat. And I know we're in 2014, so you have to kind of go back, get your mind back to a year ago. So from 2012 to 2013, the revenues were flat at $21.3 million. There were some decent increases in most of the revenue sources. The sales tax increased from 2012 to 2013. Transient occupancy taxes increased, and harbor revenues increased. So generally speaking, I would assume that you had more tourism in 2013 compared to 2012. Those are all measures of that. However, the reason why the revenues are flat is because the property tax revenues were down from the prior year. And that doesn't mean that your property tax values are down, it's just because in the prior year, the redevelopment agency was dissolved, and that was a big source of property tax. So it happened about midway through 2000, the 2012 year. Well, in 2013, you don't have any of the redevelopment agency revenues. You have a full year of that missing property tax. Moving on to the expenses, a little better picture on the expenses. The total expenditures decreased by $1.7 million from the prior year. The harbor and other business-type enterprise funds had a small increase in expenses, but the biggest increase in expenses was in the governmental fund types. They declined by about $1.6 million. And that also is due largely to the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. So since you didn't have that property tax funding, you probably didn't have as many projects. And you can see that purple line in there in the prior year, that represents $830,000 of interest expense on redevelopment agency debt. So you no longer have that debt showing up in the city's financial statements. So you, you know, saved $830,000 just from the debt component itself. The general fund of the city is one of the most important funds for you to analyze. It's your primary operating fund, so I always like to look at it during our presentation. In total, the general fund for 2013 had a gain of $521,000. In the prior year, in 2012, it had a small loss, so it was a pretty significant change for the general fund. The revenues, you can see in the third column, the actual revenues of $8.5 million were almost $2 million higher than what you budgeted. And additionally, they were close to $1 million higher than the prior year. So you did have some significant increases in revenues in the general fund. The biggest increase was in the property tax line, that you can see taxes on that very first line. The biggest component of that is property taxes. So while the redevelopment agency property taxes went away, there was a reallocation of property taxes in your favor, and you ended up getting more general fund property taxes, which is nice because you can spend those however you want. They're not restricted to their expense. Some of that is, was a one-time revenue, and some of it is ongoing.
Yeah, you'll get, from now on, it looks about maybe a third to 20%. Somewhere between 25 and 33% of those funds that used to come in to the redevelopment agency, now that they've been reallocated, it goes through a formula, and you get a percentage of that. So you're still getting some money from redevelopment, it's just coming to the city rather than the redevelopment agency, but it's only a fraction of what you were getting three years ago.
So looking at the expenses in the general fund, the total expenses exceeded the budget by $1.5 million. Sorry, the screen's not showing, but at the bottom, the total expenses are $8.3 million, and the budget was $6.8 million. So generally, I know, I'm sure there was reasons for exceeding the budget, but generally, you want, you set up budgets to try to control your expenses. So going forward, you'd like to see your actual expenses be closer to what you budgeted. The expenses were also $1 million higher than the prior year in this case. And the biggest variance compared to the prior year was the line for contract services. You can see it, the actual results were about $1.2 million, whereas only, the budget was only $600,000. And in the prior year, I think it was close to $500,000 or $600,000. So that was the biggest increase. When I looked into that to prepare for this meeting, it looked like the most, the most significant component of contract services that went up between 2012 and 2013 was legal services related to some of the pollution issues that you've been having. So the good news is that's, you know, potentially just one-time expenditures that happened during that year.
And services and charges versus contract services, but are services and charges?
It's probably made up of 300 different accounts. I don't know if Chris knows off the top of his head.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, I know for the contract services, that was the first, that was the biggest year we had of the toxic case. So, and we're, that's over and done with now in terms of exposure to that.
Okay.
But even, within general government, services and charges, because it's not contract services, it would include employee salaries, that line item. General government, employee salaries, so that's going to be city management, finance, those types of general government, amongst a lot of other things as well. And I did want to point out on, you know, we do, as a byproduct of the audit, like to give you internal control recommendations, things to bulletproof the city against potential fraud or anything bad ever happening. So this year, we had, I'll just throw them all up here. We had six comments that were repeated from the prior year. And since we only gave you those comments four months ago, it doesn't surprise me that you haven't corrected every one of them. And then three new comments for the current year. A lot of the comments relate to segregation of duties, and I know that there has been some changes already in the finance department to change some duties around to tighten up those controls. You know, we continue to see issues with compliance with the purchasing policy. So I appreciate the discussion tonight about wanting to follow the purchasing policy guidelines. It's there for a reason. And, and so we, ideally, we will test for compliance with your purchasing policy. We'd like to see you get to a point where you don't have violations of your purchasing policy. But I don't think there's anything up here unless you wanted to talk about anything specific that I wanted to go into. Number three will solve itself hopefully soon. There were some missed filings with the SEC on the redevelopment agency debt. You're required to file your audited financial statements within a certain period of time. Obviously, the audit had not occurred yet, so you were not able to file within that, within that time. But generally, for, I believe for each one of these, the internal control letter has not only our recommendation, but it also has management's response to what they are doing to correct these issues. And in every case, the responses are that either something has already been done or that there is a plan to have something done. So I would expect next time you meet with me, this list will be significantly smaller. So lastly, I just wanted to thank the finance department. I think they did an excellent job this year. They were very prepared for the audit. We found the quality of the records to be in very good shape. And, you know, the first year audit's never easy, but this was a very smooth audit compared to the audit that we did for the prior year. So we wanted to thank staff for that.
Thank you very much.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Nice job.
And thank you, Chris, and finance department, too. That's excellent. It was nice to run those recommendations. He really did, I think maybe there was, the last one was like, oh, we're still working on this, but everything else looks like they were right on top of. So that's really fantastic. Thank you. Questions of either?
Good job.
Nice to be close to current.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to say anything? Oh. Thank you. Do we have?
I'm sorry. No, sorry. I just wanted to be able to see.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Staff recommendations.
Okay. And is there public comment? If no further comment, we'll call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay, item number eleven.
Okay, item number eleven is the vehicle noise ordinance administrative policy update. And as you know, the prior council in January of 2014 adopted an administrative policy outlining how to handle vehicle noise that exist in our municipal code. And Jordan was tasked with that and with the steady aid of Dudley Moran. They have done a great job. I know Jordan's been before us a couple times giving us updates on this. And all the temporary permits that have been issued to the vehicles that didn't pass the noise are going to expire October first, so we're needing your guidance on how to proceed forward.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we need to know where we want to continue this program, if we want to continue this program, to what extent we want to continue our efforts, if we want to find now whether we're going to continue with the systematic checking of vehicle noise as per required with the annual vehicle registration for a city permit, if we're going to hold true to the six-month grace period ending October first for vehicles that expire. And then if we are doing all that, what levels of enforcement do we want to pursue to make sure it stays strong? I recommend that we continue doing the sound testing as connected to the annual vehicle registration. If you remember my numbers from last time, we still have a lot of vehicles that are very close to not passing, and I think it's going to take another time or two to kind of really vet that process out since, based on our data, maintenance is the biggest contributor to vehicle noise. So it's going to take a little time to kind of get that and everybody on the same page. In terms of how it affects people, it's obviously not an easy thing to deal with. You're having to put out an expenditure for a vehicle. But I think people have had a pretty decent amount of time to work on their vehicle. There are some hard circumstances of people who have vehicles that just have bigger, more powerful engines, and they're a little bit louder, so there is some difficulty in kind of being very clear, or you know, it's not just always their fault. But we want to be kind of, I want to know if you guys want to hold the line and move forward or where we want to go.
I'm sure we all have comments. Who would like to start?
I would. I'd still like to know what we're doing about all the other noise in town, all the other vehicles, the big trucks and everything that just totally overwhelms golf carts. Although, I commend you on the job you've done, and there are golf carts that are nuisance and a problem, but...
Right, and I think that falls exactly in line with where you guys want to take this, as all vehicles do, are subject to the vehicle's noise ordinance. So if it is a desire to continue enforcing the vehicle noise ordinance, our plan is to kind of move forward with rolling in commercial vehicles, commercial autowets into the testing. The hard part with them in terms of testing was just logistics due to limited resources and personnel. But what we would do is something like, starting with February, commercial vehicles that expire, along with residential ones, would have to come and get their vehicle tested. We've continued testing every Monday to accommodate people who need to retest or are late. So something like that could be done for commercial vehicles as they expire every month throughout the year. And we could do something like with the golf cart rentals, doing their test in the wintertime, where it's a little bit slower for them, makes it a little bit easier for testing. So something like that to fill in those types of vehicles. Full-size vehicles, we'd have to find a different testing location just because they don't have enough space to be tested right here, and how we'd want to test them. And then it gets into the larger buses and tour buses, construction equipment. That's even harder because for this, a lot of it comes down to me is what's reasonable and what's responsible. I mean, for the trash trucks, their hydraulics are the loud part. The vehicle itself is not very loud when it's in operation, but when they're on the hydraulics, that's technically pretty loud. But the technology, that's the best technology kind of available for those types of vehicles. When tractors go down the street, they are definitely quite loud, but it seems like unless we don't want any construction in town at all, those sort of things, there has to be kind of a reasonable balance to manage them. But holding all vehicles that are in operation in town accountable, that's kind of a process that we need to move forward with and figure out how we want to manage those. Tour buses, they're big. That's not an easy replacement. That's a huge expenditure, but moving forward with those types of things, they definitely have a huge impact.
I just find it real hard to pick on the citizens of Avalon who have to have golf carts, a lot of them. A lot of people have to have them. A lot of us don't need them. We can walk, we can ride a bike, we can do other things other than our golf carts. But if we have a policy that basically pulls out the people of Avalon and leaves all businesses, all construction, all work trucks, all commercial vehicles, out of the picture, I...
There's definitely no intention to leave them out of the picture.
I have a problem with that. Okay, so that's good, then we can move forward with this. I don't, like you just said, though, technology doesn't provide us an opportunity. With golf carts, I think there's an opportunity for a real good, young, smart, old, whatever, entrepreneur to come in and find a way to quiet these vehicles down. There's definitely a business there for someone to start up and to, I mean, if we got three, four-hundred vehicles that need to be quieted down, I know people who have really pretty nice custom golf carts that are just too loud, and they need to be quieted down. So that's my major concern is just, I know I'm going to get flack for this because, from both sides, because how can you pick on the construction vehicles? I'm not. I'm not picking on anybody. I'm trying to come up with a logical solution to where it doesn't seem like we're picking somebody from here because their golf cart's too loud, but then again, the trash truck's ten times louder than the golf cart. That's my major concern. But I will definitely work with you on this, and I want to find a remedy for this because I think your efforts are really, really good.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of complexities to administering it and finding out what is a reasonable enforcement and moving through it. That's, I think, what we're trying to do now. I think one of the really successful things about this with the residential's was we've got a fantastic set of data, so we really started to understand the autowet category a little bit better. We could try and do something similar with tour trucks, large-sized vehicles, figuring out how and where exactly to test them to get that kind of same data. But I don't want to say we're not moving forward with anything. It's just that those types of things are going to take a little bit of time to work out. So that's the only part that I want to encourage people is to have a little bit of patience. We're not going to have answers for all of these today, this month, maybe even this year, to go through all of these different elements because there's a lot to figure out. I mean, an autowet, it seems simpler. It's a smaller space, it's less to work on and figure it out, but we still gave six months to kind of figure it out with those people. And we started expanding out to these other larger, more, you know, categories, it's going to take a little bit of time to figure out. But I fully, if you guys desire, totally want to take on all of these elements and start rolling them in. It's just going to take a little bit of time.
I support your program. I just, and I'll try to come up with some ideas myself. Or maybe my constituencies might come forward with some ideas, but some things that are just out of, they're just too much. Like you said, technology doesn't provide us an alternative. We're just going to have to make exceptions, I would assume.
Well, and that's where we could figure out how to test them or where to test them and get that kind of data, so we can look at it and see, what scope of work are we talking about really, you know, in terms of those types of vehicles? What are we looking at? When numbers, when you, if you say all of them don't comply, then all of a sudden, it's okay, well, how do we manage that in terms of what the city can do? And what does that mean for the impact for the people who own those particular vehicles? So there's definitely an intent to include everything because the ordinance covers everything. It's just, how do you guys want to move forward carrying that out?
Do you want to come and send it?
I'll just say, after talking a little bit, my request or my direction would be to uphold the ordinance, continue on. I don't want to see any more grandfathering for hardly anything, if we can help it. I think it's fair to say we've given enough presentations, enough data, enough time, that I think ticketing and enforcement of the ordinance is appropriate for where we are with the ordinance today, which is the personal autowets. I'd like to see us start commercial autowet testing as soon as you see fit. If you feel that the best time to start that is in February, then I support your, where you think it's the best time to do it. I would like us to go out and look at how we can start testing full-size, both residential and commercial, full-size vehicles. And I think there's, part of this comes into an overall discussion I'd like to have in a transportation study. But in speaking to one of your comments, Joe, I know for sure that I'm one of those persons who's complained many times about this particular commercial vehicle or this one, and why aren't you, you know, why aren't you testing them too? And Jordan has been very good to explain that. It certainly isn't to exclude them, it's to, where do we start and get the most bang for our buck? Where do we understand it? Where do we learn it? And then going forward, how do we incorporate everybody else? So I'm ready for commercial autowets right now, and tomorrow, if you could start, and then finding a path for getting the equipment or researching the equipment for full-size vehicles. I'm there. I'm fully supportive.
And let me, ditto. But one of, you were looking, City was looking into impound and removal, which was part of this in a, that was for derelict vehicles, but also maybe if somebody decides to just give up on their piece of junk. Have we gotten anywhere on that one? I don't...
Yeah, Audrey McDonald has been working directly on that, and she informed me that they've made significant progress, where they expect to roll out with a program probably in September. And that is specifically targeting derelict, abandoned vehicles. However, you know, there may be people who have vehicles that are so inoperable, which is why they didn't pass perhaps, that dealing with the transportation to properly dispose of them off the island might be a difficult thing. And that is something that we discussed about how we can provide services to help people do the right thing. We are looking into other options. I've put in, submitted, you know, like I said last time, cash or clunkers proposals to other agencies who regulate for air quality, but we would get the benefit of getting rid of polluting vehicles and quite loud vehicles trying to get in. As well as Mercedes-Benz of Laguna and Niguel has specifically expressed an interest for people who want to get a smart car, that they'll do a cash or clunkers program, which is fantastic, because then we have a business managing that and providing financial assistance for vehicle owners that the city doesn't have to put into. And I've even looked into working with Donate Your Vehicle to KCRW nonprofit, so then maybe you can get a tax write-off if there's no other options for you. You know, so there's a lot of different ways that we want to help residents meet these needs. It is definitely, for all the residents who are dealing with it right now, a hardship. I mean, people have come up and said, the money that I had to spend to make my vehicle pass was my vacation money. And I totally recognize that. To me, the goal is not to put people in hard positions, but to really advance the quality of life. And so figuring that balance out is not an easy one, and that's kind of what we want to see with you guys. I think we have been very reasonable, and I do think there does need to be a level of personal responsibility as a vehicle owner, because your decisions impact the entire community. And so that's something that I think people need to recognize in this process as well.
So as of October one, those people who have not corrected their vehicle because they have either the scarlet letter or nothing at all...
Right.
...will be, somebody will see the, are we generating a list from our side of all those vehicles that did not pass, so we knew what to look for? Are we just waiting for them to be nabbed by code enforcement or law enforcement?
Well, that's something that would come down under your guys' direction. If you do want to enforce it, the way I perceive it would work would be, all those vehicles either have an expired fourteen sticker or the red temporary permit. If they get a ticket for, what would happen is they'd get a ticket for expired permit, or if they're driving down the street and it's perceived as too loud, and you want to enforce this throughout the year, they could get a ticket for being excessively loud. The only way they can get an updated city permit is if they pass a noise test. And if they didn't pass, they can't get the permit. And if they don't have anything and they're just driving around, they still have to go through, and if they don't pass then, then they can't get a permit. Starting October first, if vehicles are cited for noise and we do want to enforce it, it would defer to what the municipal code says, and it is required, it's a fix-it ticket essentially, and it gives, I think, thirty or sixty days. I'd have to double-check what the California DMV law states for those type of tickets to fix it. And then they would either fix it or not, and they'd have to still get rid of the vehicle or not. So that's kind of, it'd be the same thing that we're doing now, but just instead of six months, they'd have thirty days or sixty days starting October first. And we would require the support from the sheriff's department as well as code enforcement to really actually enforce this and make it workable.
What's the percentage of vehicles remaining?
Eight percent, about a hundred and twenty vehicles.
Okay, I was going to say less than ten percent. I mean, it's fair to say that there's a quality of life issue on the other side, too, that I certainly respect that there are those that may have financial hardships, but I think we would be in a much different position if we did small checking over here, which we're very lucky that we don't. But that being said, as a vehicle owner, you have a responsibility. It's no different than being on the mainland and having to have the responsibilities of maintaining a vehicle on the mainland. I think it's important for me to look at the other ninety-two percent of the population that does take care and maintain their vehicle and, you know, the quality of life for the rest of the person that's impacted by the noise of some of these vehicles.
And just to remind people, because one of the complaints that we often get from people is, my vehicle didn't pass, but I see that guy's and it did pass, and their sound's louder than mine. The way the ordinance is written is that it is based on normal hearing. If it's something offensive to normal hearing, it's in violation, and then you conclusively prove it by running through our course. Unfortunately, our ears can't really distinguish between seventy-three-point-nine and seventy-four-point-zero. Sound meter does, and that's where last time, we had, I think, forty percent of our vehicles fall seventy-three-point-zero on up. So there is a significant number of vehicles that are really in that high category. And to kind of vet that out, and because people are now taking this into consideration where they hadn't in the past, that continuation of the program seems to be the only way to actually really do it, as long as it's also coupled with enforcement through the rest of the year.
And let me ask you questions, and I don't know if you have an answer to this, or maybe you, Doug, that are all, fix-it tickets. Have you, has anybody ever been issued a fix-it ticket? And if so, how did they proceed in Avalon with that?
Well, we currently have two fix-its on our parking tickets that we offer. One is expired DMV tags, and one is expired City of Avalon tags. So you can already get tickets for that. So if someone gets, they have expired DMV, they have to come in and actually put their sticker on the vehicle in order for us to sign it off, physically inspect it and sign it off that say, yep, they do have it updated. Same thing with the city permit.
And pay twenty dollars.
And pay, and pay the fine.
I've had two of those in the last year, I'm well aware of fix-it tickets.
And the city sticker one, it would also capture vehicles that are excessive in noise because if someone has an expired one, they hadn't done anything at all, and they just get marked for expired city permit parked on the street. In order to get an updated one, they have to go through noise testing, and if the vehicle can't pass noise, they can't then get their city permit, which means they can't fix it, which means they can't register that vehicle with the City of Avalon because they haven't met the criteria that we've established. And then it would follow the same. The noise ticket that they get is a little bit different than the current tickets we have. We actually would have to create that ticket because it has to follow DMV code as it cites in the Avalon Municipal Code. But it's essentially the same thing. They have a certain amount of time, once they've received it and conclusively proved that they are in violation by running through the course, a certain amount of time to get it fixed and brought back to us for retesting otherwise.
Okay. So let me, to follow that same train, let's say I call on a really loud truck, and I would call... and I would call a truck, because it's not going through our process. I would call the sheriffs, because they can only give moving violations, right? Because code wouldn't be able to give it, because they can't stop them.
Correct.
Okay. So I guess this is a question for you, Doug, in the spirit of cooperation. And then let's say you do issue a ticket, who do they get it fixed with? Because that's not going to be the City of Avalon if it's a pickup truck. I don't believe.
And your record.
Go ahead, and Doug's right behind you.
Well, we would, we would be the ones conducting the test, the conclusive proof, to see if it was too loud, as per the municipal code. So if they issued the ticket, they still have to come to City Hall, and we would run them through the course to, to test and see whether or not they're too loud or not.
But they're, they're having to do the initial gun to hear the noise to give the ticket, correct?
No, the ordinance is written that any vehicle that's offensive to normal hearing can be in violation and issued a citation. And then to conclusively prove whether it is in violation or not, they come up and run through the course. That's the way the code's written. So whoever's enforcing it doesn't, isn't on the street standing in there with a sound level meter assessing them, they would hear a vehicle go by and say, "That one seems ridiculously loud," and issue them the citation. That's, that's how the code is currently written.
Okay. Doug, you want, it's a general subject, so go ahead.
So moving violation, would that be on your record?
Oh, excuse me, Doug Federall. There's basically three different types of tickets. There's moving violations, someone runs a stop sign, excessive speed. There's equipment violations, inadequate tire tread depth, cracked windshield, excessive amplified noise. Those would be considered the fix-it tickets. Then there's licensing, registration violations, more administrative things. We would typically cite on, if I was on the street and saw a vehicle drive by where the, the noise was, in my opinion, excessive, something just offensive, where there was no question that that vehicle was too loud. I would cite, but I would cite under the California Vehicle Code, and they would be, have to make an appearance in court. I'd cite for 60 days out from when we issued the site. They'd have to provide proof of correction when they go to court in order for the judge to dismiss the site. And that would not appear in the driving record as a moving violation.
And, and, and in this, in the town of Avalon, if you're just doing it because it's obnoxious sound, then you're going to be now referring them to the city for testing, or how do they get officially tested to see, make sure they're obnoxious or not?
They would have to provide some proof to the court. My, my guess is that they go before the judge, and they'd say, "I fixed the problem, Your Honor," and probably have to convince the judge that the vehicle's no longer offensive.
I mean, do they go outside, rev the engine, and go down the road?
I don't think the, the judge would probably have them do that. He might ask one of us to go out and listen to the vehicle to see if it's been corrected. Maybe if they came in with proof from a, a repair shop that they had, you know, spent, you know, $100 or something to fix their muffler, whatever the problem is, it would be up to the judge to make that determination whether or not he wants to dismiss the citation or not. But there's going to be some overlap between what the city's looking to enforce and what we typically enforce as the vehicle code. With the, the city codes, codes and ordinances, we, where their support will help, because code enforcement can't conduct traffic stops on moving vehicles when we can't.
How, do you know, have, have any idea if you have ever issued a noise citation?
Have I?
Your depart, the sheriff's department, since you've been here?
I don't, I can't think of one that I've issued. I've pretty much just warned people, and they're like, "Yeah, I know, I'm going to get it fixed," and they've been able to take care of it. So I, I have not had to issue a citation here for that.
Okay. So there is going to be a little overlap. I mean, so if the obnoxious truck goes down, and I want to call, I can say, "Federall, license number da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da," and you can tell them that there's been a citizen's complaint about your noise?
I mean, presumably, we could create a list of commonly obnoxious vehicles or vehicles that are called in from residents, but, I mean, I don't, I'd have to see why, or if there's anything against doing that. But in terms of its enforcement, I think it would just be, people on the street would hear it, sheriff's, code enforcement, and would be able to issue them the citation when it happens. A means of proof of correction would be if they run through our noise testing, we have the vehicle noise testing form, that then we sign off and say, "Yeah, it passes," or not, and I'd have to double-check and make sure that it's acceptable for the Sheriff's Department, that we do align our procedures together for enforcement of it.
I mean, you know, you're, I'm sure even the people that live up on the hill sites can hear an obnoxious vehicle all the way up the hill. But, you know, when you're sitting on Descanso Street, or, and, and you're watching television and you can't hear it for the, for the, about four different houses, you're going, "Okay, that's obnoxious." Okay, I jump up from America's Got Talent, and, and then it's gone. So, so that's kind of not like, right. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how we're supposed to, realistically-
Lot of gray area.
Yeah, I mean, how do you-
Well, the enforcement is one of the hard parts. I mean, that's why I think the systematic approach is also very important, as we kind of really let the dust settle on this. I think it will take a couple of years, because you have a lot of vehicles that are very close to very loud or too loud, and I think that is an important approach. The testing in between, or the enforcement in between, that systematic testing definitely would help, because it would help identify potentially loud vehicles, which would also include vehicles that had previously passed. I mean, there's vehicles that I know that drive by that passed, and when they passed, I told them, "Hey, you passed, but I can hear it, it's pretty loud, you got something wrong, it's pretty obvious, you should get it worked on." And clearly, they haven't, six, four months later, and it's gotten louder and louder to the point where now, if I were to test them, they would not pass.
Right.
So that's where the enforcement part would come in, to where it would keep people on top of it. If there was no enforcement in between the two periods, we still would be getting people, it just would make the process, you know, a little bit longer or harder to, to fully manage, but it still would be manageable.
I mean, I know you got the program down, so you can test them pretty quick and all, but I know it is pretty labor-intensive. And I, and I think to mirror what Cindy was saying, is one of the priorities we're going to be talking about is, is the whole transportation issue and, and by committee, and that's going to be a big one, and that will take in to consideration those kinds of things, as well as other things to maybe even just minimize the number of vehicles on, on our streets in Avalon. So-
Right, it's a whole set of goals and values. This is one value that's been identified by council and the community back in 2000, that then has been upheld today as an important value that we wanted to manage. And so that's where we kind of stand with noise, is it's, it's been identified as a quality of life value that people want to deal with. And going through the process is definitely going to take a lot of time. We are going to have a lot of logistics to figure out, is how do we enforce this properly? How do we make sure it's fair? How do we deal with all the other types of vehicles? But if you desire, I fully anticipate moving forward with all of that.
So that'll include motorcycles, quads, anything like that?
Motorcycle, quads are all currently regulated under the ordinance. They're not required to receive a city permit, as it stands right now. So they wouldn't systematically be checked, because they wouldn't come up here to get a city permit. But those specifically would be ones where if we don't have enforcement on the streets, they can continue to go, because they never come up to see us. So those would be the only ones that you'd have to have someone on the streets who stops them and says, "You're, you seem pretty loud, here's your ticket," and then they'd have to come up, and then at that point, we would be able to run them through the course and say, "Yes, you are in violation of the motorcycle section of the vehicle noise ordinance." But yeah, they are subject to the ordinance.
Um, I, I concur with your feelings and Cindy's feelings on the golf cart program that's been in place. I believe the discussion this evening showed that we still need a little more research on how we move this onto the street, because Doug's cited under municipal code, I mean, under a vehicle code. We need to get him cited under the municipal code, so we can get him into, into the loop for us, so we could work on that. I, I would support us continuing with the golf cart program, and then continue to implement additional programs that cover the noisy trucks, the noisy motorcycles, the noisy cars, and stuff like that. And there was a time when we did sticker motorcycles.
We actually went to the sheriff's station, and they did the noise-
They did do that, in the good old days.
And, and in terms of the areas concerned, but do you want us to consider, I'm thinking we're also seeing, proceed with your options for shipping the vehicles off the island? Cindy said something about grandfathering, and I'm sure that's something we may not want to consider.
No, no, no.
Grandfathering's not an option.
No, and, and I want to talk about that as part of the overall, one of the things we, it's our goal, it's our number six goal, is a transportation study session. Jordan, in one of your bullet points, the big picture, transportation design goals and values, how, how does this fit in? But, but that is, one of my big things is to, we've got to go away from grandfathering things in. So I, I don't want to set the precedent of, what would we grandfather? Because I just, I don't want to see us do that.
And as a point of information, like, brought my little golf cart up here, I thought it was a Smithy Doo, and it was like 73.7, or 70, yeah, 73.7. And I took it down to visit Yama, and the problem was the rear end was getting old and tired, and they had to replace some gears in there. And I get, now it's nice and quiet. So I mean, it is, it's a general maintenance thing, and there's some golf carts here that, the original golf cart that my grandfather had, given to him from the company when he retired, is still on the island. And my daughter burned up the first engine in that when she was going to high school, so I know that it's missing some good maintenance.
Right, it's definitely, it's definitely a difficult issue for a lot of people. But we want to be as reasonable as possible, and I think moving forward with this is a quality of life value that I do think in three years, people are going to look at it as we, as we stay on top of it, and just kind of think, "How, how did we live the other way?" I mean, this, it, there's going to be a noticeable difference. The difference hasn't started yet, because like I said, we still have 120 vehicles that are loud, we still have 40% of the vehicles that are very close to quite loud, so we have not really gone through a full cycle of kind of vetting that whole thing out, which does cause a lot of people some, you know, discomfort with the system. They feel like it's not working. But I do think it is working, it just does take time, and we are trying to work for options to make it as accommodating as possible for people. But so far, holding the line and moving forward.
So, but I understand, on October 1st, if someone has the violet letter, violet notice or red notice in the window, or doesn't have a sticker, they get ticketed, and they're going to have 30 to 60 days after that before they're held to task?
Yes.
But they can continually get ticketed until it gets fixed, and then every time, it's a, an added cost.
They can get ticketed for noise, they could get a ticket for expired city permits.
Well, I've got, I failed my noise-ing, and so on October 1st, I haven't fixed it. So I get a ticket for expired city registration, and I have 30 days to get that fixed, and I don't get it fixed, so I get another ticket for expired city registration, and it's just kind of ongoing cycle.
It's just going to compound until you get it fixed, as long as it's on city streets or parked on city property.
Right. And then the way that would vet out is, if people do have vehicles that they're continually operate in violation and just building up tickets, by the time they come to register with the City of Avalon next year, or potentially the year after, depending on when their DMV registration expires, they will not be able to register with the DMV, which means they will not be able to get a city permit. So if someone just kind of wants to keep beating at the system, it'd only be a year or two before they couldn't register that vehicle with us, because they couldn't get registered with the DMV, because they have all outstanding tickets.
Dudley, did you want to add something?
Currently, those type of tickets, those fix-it tickets, can be written on a daily basis, so they could actually, maybe not the, we could probably avoid the red sticker ones, but the expired city tags, how's our code going to know? They're, they're not going to be keeping track of, oh, this guy gets 30 days now.
No, that's what I was saying, Dudley, they will, they will repeatedly get tickets-
Right, that's what, I just wanted to clarify.
Expired tags could be a ticket every day.
Yes.
Right. So that's what, that's where we got to get direction on that. Do you, are we going to give them more time? It's not really feasible or logistically good for our code guys to, they're not going to know. I mean, I mean, some of them they'll remember, but we can't expect them to police that.
Yeah, their direction wasn't to just, okay, you ticket them once, they have 30 days. That's why we made sure they knew that every day they can get a ticket.
Right.
And it's going to be a $20 fix-it ticket.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, excuse me, $22 fix-it ticket, until they get it fixed. But when they finally do, they'll probably only rebuild the 22 bucks, because it's the same thing.
I, I've had two expired city permits, one personal, one commercial, and both times it's like, "Oh, I got to go up and do that," and I'll come up usually the same day or the next day and redo my registration and, you know, pay the $22, because I deserved it. But what I also see happen in town, which is very discouraging, is somebody will get a ticket, either they're illegally parked or whatever the case may be, and they leave the ticket on their vehicle, and they just pretend as if they haven't seen the ticket. So, I mean, there's, there's obviously the person who has truly forgotten something or is, you know, that reminder, go up and take care of it, but, but we are always going to have a handful of people who just simply are not going to follow the rules, and those people generally should get more than one ticket, if that's the case.
The majority of the vehicle noise violations, I suspect, would be on vehicles that have current city permits, because in general, those would be the ones that are going to be majority on the road in operation. The ones with expired tags, those would most likely be ones that didn't pass already and then failed now, and then they were given six months to do it, and so at that point, it's kind of on them to have done something. So if they, starting October 1st, if they're operating on the streets, you know, that's a city permit and vehicle noise, if they got cited for vehicle noise. So in general, most of the tickets that would be issued like this, I would see being current city permits, but just ones that are now, "Hey, you, you're pretty loud, what's going on," and issue the citation. So then they would be not getting tickets for expired city permits, because they're current.
Right.
But they're just in violation of the noise, and that's the ticket that they'd be dealing with. So they wouldn't be accumulating tickets, and I don't know about the pro, well-
Yes, they would, because they'd have expired city-
No, if it's not expired, I mean.
Right.
If you receive a ticket because you're loud, but you're not expired, you get your one, you get your one ticket. And if, we'd have to determine whether or not they're still operating on the streets during those 30 days, they can still get another vehicle noise, or if they have that 30 days, that's what they have, and we need to do a permit for that. Those are some of the things that we do have to figure out, and that's what we wanted to see from you guys, where we want to move, so we can kind of start getting answers to those questions.
So you're, you're saying that the scarlet letter constitutes a 30-day notice on getting the sound thing fixed, and if they're still operating on October 2nd, they've already been put on notice?
Yeah, at that point, they can just start getting tickets. But if they do get a ticket, because it's the first part of enforcement, I suspect they would have the fix-it time to have it work on. So yes, they would have the additional time if, on October 1st, they get a ticket, they have a scarlet letter for the, if they got a ticket for noise, they would have that time, because that's the first time they received a ticket for that, I believe is how it would work.
Dudley's got, come on up, Dudley.
Well, if they have the scarlet letter in their window, they don't have a current city sticker.
Right.
Right.
So that's what they're getting the ticket for.
That's what they get nailed on.
Okay.
So, but Doug brought up a good point here. What we do with vehicles that do not have permits, or have expired permits, if he writes the ticket and makes it a court ticket, then the judge could ask for that vehicle to be shipped off the island unless they can prove some type of correction. In the case of the blue stickers, if they're not eligible for a blue sticker, then there's no way they can fix that ticket, so the judge says, "Okay, you've got a week, 14 days to put it on the varge." So that would be a good solution. Thank you, Doug, for bringing that up. So we've never done it with golf carts before, we've only done it with full-size vehicles, but that might be a, an ultimate cure for that.
Well, and it, the whole thing about, I can understand if, if it's like I'm in the one-hour zone, and so I'm not going to, you know, and I get a ticket, and I'm going to leave it on there, hoping that somebody thinks I just got it, but I got it yesterday or whatever. But if they have 30 days on these others, and it was the, you know, the October 1st thing, it might be good for them to leave it on their golf cart, so when the guys go up, they're not reissuing and reissuing and reissuing, because the people really do have a 30-day grace period.
But I don't think that gives them right to use the vehicle, they have 30 days to get it fixed.
Okay, but that doesn't mean I can't park it in front of my house, though.
Yeah, it can.
Yes, it does.
I can't even park it, oh, it has to be on-
It's probably, got to go to private property.
Okay, well, that's what I said earlier, so that's good.
I mean, the prior council gave the direction to move forward with this, and gave a very generous six months during the most profitable time of the year, and gave that six months, plus a little bit of leniency after the busy time of the year to be able to fix those[1757.73] golf carts. And I feel like that was very generous at the time, so that's why I don't have as much leniency now. If there is a case of a serious hardship, there's a case for that, and I believe the whole, I believe very clearly that the city will work with somebody who presents a real hardship. And that's the quality of the staff that we have. So, I think there's some provision for that, but in most of these cases, I don't think we've, I don't think anybody's brought a serious hardship forward.
That's correct. I only had three people come up and talk to me independently of actually testing their vehicle about vehicle noise ordinance. So, while I'm absolutely willing to work with people, if they said we need more time, or we need help, or we need something, I'm absolutely pure, willing to work with people to help make it possible.
Excellent.
We had specific times for testing, but there are times where people come up and said, listen, we had really difficult coming over, we can't make your set times for noise testing, can you help us out? And we can make, we have made accommodations to help those people out to get through that process. So, I think we, we have been accommodating very well, but it is hard to make any accommodations that nobody's come up and talked to us about. So, that's where I feel that level of personal responsibility as a vehicle owner does come into play here in our community.
I'm glad you've done that, because that, that shows a gesture of kindness and goodwill and good faith towards our constituencies. And that's good, at least people that care enough to come up and say, hey, I got my car worked on, I spent a hundred fifty dollars on it, and I brought it down, let's say they still don't pass, but they brought it down three decibels, or whatever, so.
We had one gentleman who, he worked on his vehicle and brought it in five times, and he, each time, did something, worked on it, worked really hard, and kept bringing it down. And he's the type of person who, if we come up with programs to assist people, I'm going to contact him personally and say, hey, we've got something that can help you out.
Good.
For other people who have shown no initiative to do anything, it's hard to make any accommodations for them. And that's where I think that, that level of personal responsibility comes in. But there are people who worked really hard, and, and even though their vehicles may pass of their hard work, it's still not passing very well. And so, there is a lot of hardship that is going to be incurred for a lot of people, and I, we totally recognize that. So, we do want to be as accommodating as possible, but I feel holding the line and moving forward is, is important.
So, if I may, can I summarize?
Yes, please, please.
What I think's happening? So, as of October first, our code enforcement will start ticketing vehicles that do not have a current city registration. The sheriffs, if they are so, if they can find the vehicles, they're too noisy, they can ticket the moving one, is that correct, Doug? You'd be willing to do that, your sheriffs? Then, direction to Jordan and Dudley to figure out a schedule of some sort to move forward with all the rental golf carts, and to figure out how to test the full size in some type of schedule. You two work together to do that. And there is one thing I would like to ask, is, we were testing electric golf carts because the code said, all vehicles. I think it's silly to waste staff time to test an electric vehicle. Would any of them ever not pass, Jordan?
We actually had one that almost didn't pass.
An electric one? What was its noise from?
A squeaky axle.
Oh.
But, but, in our administrative procedure, based on our data, I do feel very comfortable exempting electric vehicles, smart cars, porters, full-size style vehicles like minis, such as that, because we only had four not pass out of all of them. So, I do think it is a better use of time to not test those systematically, and go to spot checking them. And if you hear a porter that goes by on the street, and you're going, eh, that seems a little loud, then it's totally reasonable to issue a citation. So, they're not getting a free pass. But in terms of the data, how many vehicles didn't pass out of those categories, I feel very comfortable saying, those don't need to go through sound testing to get their city sticker, whether it's a new purchase, or they're re-upping. So, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I missed something in there. Which ones did you say you would not feel to give use?
Electric vehicles, smart cars, minis, porters, full-size style vehicles that fit within the AutoWeb category. We only had four total not pass out of all of them that were, were fit those general descriptions. However, in exempting them, city staff would still retain the right to, if one comes up and we hear it, to test it as per our standard procedures. And in addition, if a vehicle is seen to be offensive, or heard to be offensive in operation, it could still be issued a citation. So, I think it's more, a better use of city resources to cite, cite them on the streets when they're driving down the streets, as opposed to making every single one go through testing, when the vast, vast majority of those types of vehicles passed without a problem. Does that make sense?
It does. I disagree with the porters' part. That's what I thought that I had heard. The small trucks, there are a significant amount of them that are very loud.
And we can cite them on the streets. I mean, out of the ones that we tested, out of the residential ones, I think we had two porters, maybe three not pass. Out of all those types of vehicles, we only had four not pass. But if they are in operation on the street and they're too loud, that's an easy citation. So, that's where I think they can be managed, if there are some that are excessively loud.
Kick that horse around.
And, and also proceeding with getting the vehicles off island is the other thing they wanted, wanted. And then I, okay. So, I think staff has direction.
I have direction.
Any public comment?
Public comment? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jordan. Nice job.
Okay, item number twelve. Go to these goals.
This is adoption of phase one of the city council goals. So, the city council has met in two previous meetings, and they had, we came up with many goals, which we streamlined to six. And I'm just going to go over those just really briefly before we start hitting them. First one was Pebble Beach Road, making Pebble Beach Road a safer and more pleasurable experience. Number two was to achieve a balanced city budget. Three was looking at freshwater resources. Four was reclaimed water. Five was infrastructure. And six was a comprehensive transportation review. So, with the council's permission, I would like to put three of those on a hold. And that would be item three and four, which is freshwater resources and reclaimed water, until after our big water study meeting next Tuesday, and then we can recalibrate, okay? And then number six, the comprehensive transportation review, which was mentioned, it ties into our phase two thing also, Cindy. And if we, if I could propose having a transportation meeting, since we only have one September sixteenth meeting, I don't want you to think, to get away from having too many meetings like we've been in a row. If, on Tuesday, September ninth, or September twenty-third, we could do a night meeting to get public input also on a transportation review. So, it would be removing three tonight. Is council good with that?
We were doing so well, too.
Then I will send an email out for you to give me your feedback on those two dates. What's that?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
See, but I'm a little concerned that the, I mean, not concerned, the comprehensive transportation review, I'm assuming will be definitely more than one meeting.
Probably.
Okay. And it would be nice at some point to have other community members, I mean, it will be public, I guess, so they can input then.
Yes, we would encourage the public to come.
Right, because that's a, that's a biggie.
We could come up with our, to review exactly which steps you want to take care of first.
Right.
And Cindy, I know, has a bunch of ideas, so we could get together with-
Four pages.
It's getting longer and longer.
Big one. Okay, so, pull those for now, folks? Okay?
Okay, the first one, Pebble Beach Road.
Are we taking these individually?
Um, I was going to start with number one, that's good.
And are we-
We're just giving direction, huh?
Oh, we're giving further direction on them?
Is that what we're doing, right?
And we're going to adopt.
Yes, we're going to make sure that they're smart to goals.
Yeah.
Right.
My favorite.
Ben wanted me to make sure that I reminded you that goals are not set in stone, that these would be ongoing, and hopefully, some of your goals every month would be updated, so you would know the progress that staff is making towards them. And I believe that he reminded you yesterday that in staff reports, there's also a goal alignment, so eventually, the goals would be addressed with the staff reports. All right, Pebble Beach Road.
I think because of the requirements, the insurance, the first bullet point, we've got to get done, which is the fencing. And for just general safety, we've got to fill the puddles as they occur. We have our little sergi out there, and I think we have to fund some of this in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen budget. So, I think the goal, as is, is fairly complete.
And, and also, perhaps, look to see if there's any grants that might help with the walkway, or whatever.
The, the long-term, yeah, long-term.
Now, yesterday, only you said strictly that this one was more of a planning type, how are we going to plan to fix all, to hit those steps, correct?
Well, no, the, the fencing is, got to get done.
We have two years.
And we've got to keep the puddles full. And then the improvements is a planning process.
And I would like Scott to address what you brought up yesterday on the ongoing coastal commission permit.
Yeah, so, last week, the coastal commission granted the city's permit for the fencing. All the conditions that they imposed were favorable to us. Basically, it means we have to keep the road open unless the public safety officer declares that it is unsafe, and we can close it. They did put a two-year time limit. In other words, our permit with the coastal commission to do that fencing work is valid for two years.
Started now.
And it started right now. Yes, as soon as it's, actually, as soon as it's signed. So, the coastal commission usually takes about a month to get the permit to the city, and so, once we sign that permit, we will have two years to do that fencing work, which would involve going out, and we've already got the plans, go out to, to a bid for that. Part of the insurance requirements, the insurance company did issue fifteen million dollars of insurance, is that we also develop a plan for the walkway on the other side of the road. And so, we will be doing that as well. But, but those are, again, the coastal commission approved the fencing project, and it was on the consent calendar, so it's a sail-through.
Cool. A few years ago, I was at a coastal commission meeting, and we had an agenda item, but there's another item on the agenda where there was ongoing beach maintenance, that the commission granted an ongoing beach maintenance permit to some city, someplace?
We, we, we could, we could have an application. We, we currently have approval from the coastal commission for ongoing sand replenishment.
In Avalon.
So, we could come forward and ask for a, well, we tried to ask the coastal commission to give us blanket permit to make emergency repairs. And the coastal commission said, no, you, we're not going to give you that, you have to come to us within seventy-two hours after an emergency repair. If we could come forward with a plan for the walkway, and we could say that we'll take ten years, or five years, however, then we would get a permit for the amount of time that that, that that project takes. But, you know, again, they're going to want to see a, a, a plan, and the reason they liked this plan was because we actually had the plans and specs, and we had where, where the post would go, and how the fence would, would look. And so, so, so the coastal commission granted that. We also have to, with, with any of the walkway, we have to get the outing company's approval, because it is, we have an easement for it, but, you know, it is their land.
Yeah. Is that for the entire length of the road, or is that just where the city property is, by Ring Rock?
For fencing?
No, no, not the, the walkway.
The walkway is-
Would it be the entire length of Pebble Beach Road?
I believe that's what-
Or does it go to Ring Rock where the city property stops?
No, it's going to go all the way through to the freight-
Freight lines?
Yeah.
And the theory, theory is, we have access to funds that the private landowner doesn't.
Okay, we were talking, also, something I saw that's not in here, is we were talking about a lane divider, just around the blind curve, around Oso Rock. Just because it's kind of dangerous to pass right there. And that was brought to my attention by one of my constituents, and I just wanted to lay that out there, and ask maybe what the city council might think of that. Just like a no-pass area, like about, maybe a hundred, maybe fifty yards before and fifty yards after Oso Rock, which is just the only blind turn out there. And it's, and it's the narrowest part of the road on Pebble Beach.
What is Oso Rock?
It's just a rock, it's where the wind-
Windsock used to be.
It's like where the windsock used to be, when the seat plane, well.
After that point, you're going down there, and there's a little dog leg. It's the only blind, it's the only other blind corner side that that one went.
That little jog in the road where you can't see around the curve.
Oh, okay.
A lot of times, there's rocks out there, and I just, one of my constituents, well, actually, two of my constituents have had some concerns about that out there, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the council, so maybe we can-
Isn't the traffic engineer the city manager?
Yes.
Why don't we refer to the traffic engineer, and let him take action on it?
I wrote it down.
Okay.
Good point, Joe. Okay, so, we're good with number one?
We're on one.
Okay, number two, balanced, to achieve a balanced city budget. So, we have four bullet points there. Three of those bullet points would have been, we pulled out yesterday for phase two, which was organizational development, and that would be to encourage and continue ongoing efforts to foster and nourish professionalism and effectiveness within the finance department, with particular attention to streamlining finance department processes and providing ongoing staff development. Are we in agreeance with that? So, it leave it, leave us with just one bullet point there, which ties in to make the city's Prop two eighteen funds healthy, which is the sewer, saltwater, and trash. We do need to develop some kind of mechanism to fund Prop two eighteen, whether that's, we, we can't raise fees enough at this point, and, or bonds, or-
So, let me ask you, so basically, you've made two. We've got the two, Prop two eighteen as being one, and then the finance.
And, and-
Okay.
Prop two eighteen, and then developing a financial support mechanism for the infrastructure, which is the Prop two eighteen.
Okay, and making a balanced budget, I don't believe it's just-
It is Prop two eighteen. Everything else is fine.
No, I agree, no, I know what you're saying, Annie.
No, because we have to develop additional reserves and all of that, so balancing budget. So, I would say things like, we need to, we need to work on a reduction of so much in other areas of city government, and, and come up with a figure that is, and that, this would be Ben coming up with a plan with the staff, of how do we reduce our overall expenses by a certain amount, not just our fin, tightening up our finance? Because it could be, as we all know, to be looking at, and I know some of, some of the things we're looking at, just like with Chris, is we're looking at, we've already started to reduce our, reduce our fiscal liabilities, okay, that was our financial liabilities, but how about in other areas of, of staff and expenses, and reducing our attorney fees, because we've reduced our risks, because we have programs to, you know, so that we're maybe not getting sued as much, or, you know, tripping falls, or whatever. So, it's a whole, it's a whole comprehensive plan to reduce our city expenditures, or at least justify growth, instead of whoops, here it is. You know, I, I just think it needs to be something more deliberate.
That's where, initially, when we talked about it, the streamlining the finance department processes, that was the nicest way that I could put that. Looking at our contract services, how much money are we spending on contractors versus employees? And up until just recently, I, I mean, council here and council previously had no idea where we really were financially, and now we're, we're like right there, where, where we need to be. So, there's already part of that's done, but how do you plan for the future when you don't even know where you are?
Right, right.
So, we're moving towards that direction now, and that, and that kind of was wrapped up in, in a nice way of saying streamline the finance department processes. And so, I, I think leaving that line item on there, contract services grid that's coming is part of that, and looking at our, our legal fees, where they've been, where they're, you know, where they're going, is all part of that. To me, that all fell within this, you know, streamlining all of this.
Okay, because it does sound like we were just kind of directing our-
No, we took it differently.
Oh, oh.
And I would note that, as the auditor showed, on the one, that toxic case, that, that, those fees included, most of those fees are actually for the consultants, the state required us to pay. And going forward, that's, that's paid for by our insurance.
No, no, those are all good things, but those, you know, if we, whatever you said, you learned a lot, that we had had so much-
Eight billion in format?
Yeah, in, in, more in restricted funds. Okay, then we need to look at how we develop through development fees and everybody else, develop fees that help with our, our infrastructure other than a bond and, and to increase our reserves, because our reserves aren't that much.
I, I think those are two goals. I think the Prop 218 funds are a specific target we can, that we've glossed over the last couple of years. I mean, we had one increase a couple of years ago. But that, there is real serious issues in those enterprise funds. I think the whole way we run the city government and the budget, I think that's, it's the same, but not exactly the same.
Right, they shouldn't, they should be separate. Two should be two different things.
Which is, which is, one is, you know, make sure that we have the right, right reserves. One of the, the Prop 218, Prop 218 fees need to have reserves associated with those too.
Exactly.
Because they need the, you know, that's the stuff that breaks, like we replaced the pump today. But the, the general way Avalon conducts business, I think that's going to be a harder thing to look at in the short term. Long-term, I think it needs to be done, but I think in the short term, we need to address stuff that we can get our hand around, which is we can get our hand around the sewer fees, the salt fees and the trash fees and appropriate reserves. And we can start thinking about the other things we've got to get done. I'm not sure we're going to get all that stuff done, you know, in the next budget cycle.
But these were smart goals for two years out.
Yep.
So, we're, and, and when you talked about ballot bud, balanced budget, I didn't know that you were, early on, just talking about the Prop 218.
Those are the funds that are most out of, out of balance.
Okay, but I think the other one is just as important. I'm not just as important, very important.
To get the adequate reserves in the general fund makes a lot of sense. But right now, the general, if we stop transferring all the money out of the general fund...
We'd be fat.
To support the enterprise funds, yeah.
We'd be better.
Be happy to where we want to get to.
Okay.
I want you to anticipate reviewing and adopting the budget in October.
Perfect.
Right. So, more meetings. And we're looking forward to this. Rally, we are. Okay, so do you, do you know where we are? Denise, we good?
I still think this is combined as one goal. I hear you, Ole, and I, I think we need to put maybe ninety percent of our effort towards Prop 218, ten percent of our effort towards the other, but to me, it's all part of balancing the budget.
I, I agree that it's all part of balancing the budget. And if we get the enterprise funds balanced, the general fund will benefit from that the moment the transfer's out over the short term.
But until that happens, we should be working on the other as well, because that's...
There's all hanging fruit out there.
I mean, because, yeah, how long, how long does it take to get fees developed and out there and...
Not hard.
Well, maybe I'm, maybe I'm Pollyanna-ish, but we will have the audited statements by the end of this year. And if revenues are up, you know, we may actually be closer to a balance. We actually may have a balance budget.
And if it rains, the reservoirs fall, we don't need to do anymore.
No, 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 no. No, no, I'm just saying that we, we...
It's not that we're not balanced.
Right.
It's just that we're balancing it on the back of the general fund.
Absolutely. The general fund is being bled for the, there's for, actually, the vehicle infrastructure had a deficit of four hundred thousand.
Right, right.
That's a general fund funded.
Yeah.
But wouldn't it be nice, like, the people from Tustin and the gentleman from Rancho Palos Verdes today to go, "Yeah, we don't really have any problems. We've got lots of money coming in and we're good." And wouldn't it nice to be saying, "Jen, what do you want to do? What do you want to build there?" I mean, wouldn't that be a nice thing? So, we need to be diligent to work so that we can have some special things and not just eke and buy.
So, are we keeping it together or separate?
I can go either way.
Together, please.
Okay.
But ninety-ten or eighty-twenty or something, right?
However, but...
Okay.
I really see it as one big picture.
Yeah. Okay.
And since Ole can go either way.
Okay. Are you good, Denise, on that one? Okay, thank you. Infrastructure, number five.
Infrastructure, develop a ten-year capital improvement plan that addresses necessary upgrades and improvements to the Cabrillo Mall, which we had a whole, pulled that one totally out yesterday as a phase two, but we'll keep it in there also. Landfill, the wastewater treatment plant, and the fuel dock. Draft and implement development fees, user connection fees, pursue grant opportunities to assist with these efforts. A budget, we should probably look at a budget fee study or what other communities are doing for their development fees.
We've been kicking this horse for a while. We've missed the boat, I think, a lot right now with not imposing, you know, fees to the contractors that are building now, development fees to help for, within the infrastructure costs. And, and here we are again, still talking about that.
But there are development fees.
Well, there are fees.
Yeah, but I know, but I mean, all right.
There, there's a limit to what you can charge too. You have to be able to justify what you're charging. It's got to make sense. It can't turn into a quote tax, a development tax. It's got to be related to something we're doing. And, you know, there's sewer money for sewer hookups, which supposedly you're going to go into the reserve fund, but they haven't been going there recently. Saltwater stuff is...
It's beyond the sewer hookups, so it's the sewer infrastructure.
But the sewer hookups are to help fund infrastructure.
It's just the impact that all these developers are making on it right now. I don't think we're getting enough, I should say. Maybe we're not getting enough money from our fee process.
We've got to replace...
Maybe that's a little easier to put, or, like you said, maybe we are limited on what we could charge. But we had to maybe seriously look into that and try to get that going as soon as we could. I mean, in my opinion, with all the impact that all these developers are making now, it's really been an impact. It's going to be another big impact on all our infrastructure, sewer plant and everything right now, with all the development at Descanso and all the other places. And, yeah, maybe they have paid a small fee for that, but I'm seeing more of an impact with people and whatever's going to be taking place right there.
So, you're talking about revising the existing impact fees that we have?
Revising or getting...
Updating?
Updating. How about updating the fees? That's what I like to see.
And let me ask you, are roads in good shape? Do we have to worry about any money for roads? Or is that somewhere else this is getting, that was, are getting funded if we have to fix our streets?
We will after we start tearing up our infrastructure and start replacing our plump, our sewage lines.
Yeah, and what, what we did last time was when we did some of the sewer work, we were able to use some of the redevelopment funds for sewer to cover the street repairs, because that, that's part of it. So, as part of any money that we seek for grants or funding from, for sewer infrastructure improvements, which I'll talk about later, there, there's a lot of money now out, out for that. We can include the street repair work for that.
Mm-hmm, okay, okay. So, do we prioritize the things in the infrastructure today? Or do we, for example, fuel dock or whatever? You know, some of these are something that has to happen sooner than later. I mean, we can't wait ten years to do some of the fuel dock.
Fuel dock's in progress.
Fuel dock and the mall both have, have requirements right now.
Yeah.
So, those are moving forward.
Yeah, so, so do we just leave it written like this or do we need to expand on it or expound on it? Or is that a say enough to...
I like it the way it is. I mean, it's...
Okay, is that say enough to?
You'd like to what, Ole?
I like the way it is. I mean, I don't know we need to expand it or what.
Okay.
Remember, it's evolving.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
A living document, breathing.
Perfect. Next time, it'll live with Ben in Vegas.
On this way to Texas.
Okay, I think we reviewed, we discussed, and we modified if necessary.
Public comment?
Yes.
My name is Judy Greer. I live at three-five-five Descanso. And I want to really commend you on the goals. I think when you have goals, when you have them placed and they're reasonable, I think that everyone can see them and can begin to ask which one is being fulfilled? How's it working? I especially like the one about the walkway and the fence, you know, going clear across, you know, around Lover's Cove. I think there are so many people who take that walk and it's awful. And so, anything you can do to priorito, prioritize that particular goal is good for me. And I appreciate the ones that you've got down, because if I had to make a list as a person, that would be my list. I'm really, really impressed. Thanks.
And we are not through. This was just Phase One of our goals. So, there's more to come soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Okay, we are going to be...
Do we want to go through the other items?
What other items?
What items?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Already pulled it.
Before we go to closed session, do we want to go down the other list?
The city manager's report, Scott?
Yeah, council member reports, et cetera.
Sure. Is there a city attorney's report?
Yeah.
Oh, you just wanted to talk.
No, no.
Start counting words.
Stop it, stop it. Remember, Tuesday night is a water seminar. We put it in the update that there's a bond for, on the November ballot, it's a water bond. We have two specific projects or categories for Avalon. We have a hundred million, five hundred thousand project for watershed protection that we can bid for. It's a competitive bid with San Francisco and Avalon is specifically included in that. That's going to be some storm water, some water supply. It's a competitive grant. We're also looking at, we have recycling in it. It's a seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-million-dollar pot, which we have to compete for. That can be used for water recycling and desalinization projects. So, there's, there's been allocated about a hundred, no, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-million dollars in projects that Avalon is eligible for. Joe Byrne will give the seminar and he will tell you that he's also working. A lot of the funding now is going through regional groups. Avalon is not a member of one of these regional groups because we are not, we're on an island.
We're a region of ourselves.
Yeah, you're a region of ourselves. And so, he's been working because of his contacts with water to find other funding for water projects that is not typically available. Or maybe we can join one, one of these groups. He'll explain that more on Tuesday. And just be prepared, the September meeting, you're going to have, the new council will be adopting the ROPS. And so, that is a process where you have to look at how you want to spend the remaining redevelopment funds you have, which are basically administrative purposes. But you also decide at that meeting what you want to do with the housing. You have the opportunity to spend some money on your housing funds. And as was in the weekly update, you do have a down payment assistance program. The Hernandez family got a loan and has closed escrow last week on a property, not...
I did?
Yeah.
You missed that, Rich?
You're a proud homeowner.
I think it's Amelia Hernandez. And so, you will be have, you will have some decisions to make in that September meeting about how you want to spend your housing funds going forward. So, you may want to start thinking about that now.
So, Mr. Flynn's needs assessment didn't come through?
We have it and we're discussing that with him. But his contract is also technically up for, it's expired by, by its terms. You can discuss at that meeting whether you want to renew that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, that was the city attorney, council member report.
What's city manager?
Oh, God, I was looking over there. The city manager. I am so sorry, Denise.
No, that's okay. I just want to let the public know that we are canceling the first meeting in September, which, I can't remember what date it is, September second or the third? What is it, Richard?
The second.
The second.
Second. But we will be having a September sixteenth meeting. There will be a joint planning commission and city council meeting prior to it. We're going to do it from three to five. And you'll have an hour break to go get something to eat and then we will continue on with the regular city council meeting.
Great, thank you. Councilman and woman?
I only have one quick thing. Last meeting, I had made a request. Do we have an emergency preparedness plan together? And I had the privilege of spending the morning with Mike Krug and we have an unbelievably very thorough plan for any possible thing that could ever happen, that we could dream of. And it was very thorough and I just wanted to thank Mike publicly for the time and effort he spent with me and also to just make it well-known that we are more than prepared. So, I am, I'm very, very impressed with what I saw this morning.
Joe?
Just, just two announcements. Oh, I wanted to thank Mr. J. H. and the city manager and, and the people who own that, that house down on Lower Descanso Street. It was, it was falling down. It was dangerous. And it had a hole in the roof and, and the homeowners as well. And Jordal Construction for getting that job done real quick. It was, it was kind of a hazard and now it's just an empty lot. And that's something that just helped the whole neighborhood. It just looked terrible.
Is that privately owned property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Own city house.
Well, yeah, because that's what somebody said, the city owned it, so, but that was previous?
City did own it before, but, so I wanted to thank them and then also, and part of what Cindy just said, you know, Jordal, I mentioned Jordal too, because those guys did the work. They did it quick. They did it without incident and, and they did it very carefully and safely. So, good job, guys. And then also, what Cindy, referring to what Cindy just said as well, just thank the Avalon's LA County Sheriff's, Doug Federal, and this, and the fire department, because we have, they're not on our priority list. And, and no news is good news, so you got, they're doing a great job. And our community is safe and I feel comfortable with that. And things are getting done and I feel good about that. So, thank you, guys. That's my only announcements. Appreciate that.
Ole?
I just want to put a shout-out to Jen and the recreation department for the water polo. It's something that, when I walk down there, people, kids are playing out there. People are playing out there. And it's, you know, an unmet need and it's being met. I think it was, it's a good job. Way to think something through. We got, I guess, a lot of people cooperated with the Harvard, with the Falls Canyon guys and the mooring service and rec department to get all the weights in and get the flotsam and stuff like that, so.
Pretty too, for those of us who don't play water polo, just like to look at it. Great.
Nice.
Excellent.
How, how many events will we have coming? Are there a few? Can you tell us about what's going on?
This will be a, a training practice because it's right before the water polo season for a high school team that's really highly ranked. That's coming out specifically just because they saw our pictures on the internet. And, but we've been contacted by fifteen other teams and probably four or five organizations and individuals that put on tournaments. So, we'll be, we're hoping to have a full roster next summer of, of tournaments out here, so.
I hate to ask, do we bill them? Do we liability insurance or they pay anything or...
Currently, right now, no, because it's considered like an open recreation space, just like an open park or the volleyball and basketball courts downtown. So, so currently, no. If we want to add that in our fee schedule, we can certainly do that coming up.
How much were those, were those goals?
They were about thirteen, huh? Thirteen hundred for both goals, because they're sold separately. And then the Harvard department already had the weights. So, I mean, that's an in-house cost and the mooring service set them for us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe we can set another one up in Middle Beach.
Yeah, I mean, if we are really looking into big tournaments, we may want, we may want to get a second set. But it's getting high use and...
Yeah, excellent.
It's really good, so, thanks.
Because the kids are entering from over the fence by the volleyball court.
Yeah.
Could we think about looking into putting some steps in so they could enter from the sidewalk over there?
Sure, can...
I mean, it's, they're going to do it anyway, so you might as well...
Make it safe.
Put that in the equation.
Yeah, we will look into it and we'll price that out and what the regulations are for that.
It's okay, Dennis.
Got a good stone mason on our crew.
We're going to be going into closed session. However, since you probably will not be here when we close the meeting, we would like to close the meeting in honor of Linda Hodge Phelps, who passed away, I believe, yesterday. God rest her soul. Okay, shall we go?
We shall go.
Doctor Scott reports.
We're going to close session to discuss all leased properties under negotiation as priced in terms of payment.
No action will be taken.
No action will be taken.
And we're back from closed session. Any reportable action?
No reportable action.
Meeting's adjourned.
Good night, Tony.